All right, we're gonna go ahead and open up this Board of Education meeting, and I, as the superintendent, I do not do that. We have another very important person who does it. And like I said, we're gonna have all of our students come. Illinois State Scholars, an Eagle Scout off the record, a fabulous singer named Abby Sanford, and then one special end-of-the-session recognition. And what we'd ask you to do is the Illinois State Scholars, it's a large group. If we can just hold our applause till everybody has passed through so we can have an opportunity to read every student's name, and that name is heard and said. Typically, we take a picture right up here, but the Illinois State Scholar Group is so big that no worries, don't wait for the picture, because there's no way that we can assemble them, you know, up here. We're going alphabetical order, so if you wanna get a picture of your child coming on up here, just you'll see them in line, and you'll know that it's almost their time. And you just, nobody's gonna think less of you if you kinda come on up here and get in here at these chairs and snap a quick shot, all right? Hey, I always say this about school board members, we've got some of our board members who ran for election, were elected. I did see Mr. Marty Borisma's right back there, he's a newly-elected board member. We've got our board members here. These are your volunteer community members. One of the most important jobs, I think, in our democracy, people volunteer, they step up to represent one of the most important things in our democracy, and that's the schools our children go to. So without further ado to open up this board meeting, could you put your hands together for our board president, Mrs. Anne Lopez-Keneva. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And thank you, parents, for coming out in this joyous event here. All right, we're gonna start, we're gonna call this meeting to order, and we'll start with our roll call. Kathy?
John Lewandowski?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Here. All right, and if everyone stands, we're gonna have our pledge of allegiance, and if you can have Mr. Michael Lewandowski lead us on this pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, let's start with our resolutions. Mr. John Greenham?
Hi, good evening, thank you. My name is John Greenham, principal here at East Campus. We have four different resolutions tonight, the first of which we will be honoring senior Kyle Brown. This resolution is recognizing Kyle Brown for achieving Eagle Scout status, whereas Kyle Brown, a senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Boy Scouts of America, for his project building a bridge to the wilderness area at Lockport Township High School East Campus. And whereas Kyle Brown has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, Troop Number 65, and Scout Master Don Marta. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Kyle Brown is hereby recognized for achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from the Boy Scouts of America on the 17th day of April 2023. Congratulations, Kyle. Now I would like to introduce our activities director, Mr. Brian Lesnar, with our next two resolutions for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Greenham. Good evening, everyone. Resolution: Recognizing the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School off-the-record acapella ensemble. William Adolf, Jenna Adler, Ethan Bokehke, Graham Carlson, Isabella Shimino, Maya Tudoba, Genevieve Conley, Jacob Havas, Jersey Joniak, Madeline Lee, Tara Mastorakos, Evelyn Mohn, Kalishay Oyeni Minzu, Josiah Posey, Whereas Lockport Township High School off-the-record LTHS's contemporary acapella ensemble placed second in the ICHSA Great Lakes Regional Semifinals and finished off their season as number-one group in Illinois for the third year in a row. And the 12th group in the United States out of nearly 250 groups nationwide. Whereas the students have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on the 17th day of April 2023. Congratulations. Resolution: Recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School student Abigail Sanford. Whereas Lockport Township High School junior student Abigail Sanford, who is part of the off-the-record ensemble performed at the ICHSA Great Lakes Regional Semifinals, was chosen as the best soloist for the fourth year in a row. And whereas Abigail Sanford has brought honor and distinction to herself, family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on the 17th day of April 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lesnar. Okay, final resolution of the evening. This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of the Illinois State Scholars from the class of 2023. Whereas the following students have excelled in the state of Illinois academic competition have been named Illinois State Scholars by the Illinois Student Assistance Commission, and thereby have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from the class of 2023 are hereby recognized for their outstanding academic achievement in the Illinois State Scholars competition. William Adolf, Charles Altman, Anna Androtich, Nathaniel Ariant, Mattis Abizonas, Aiden Bailey, Dylan Bosin, Kyle Brown, Brianna Cavill, Caitlin Casello, Isabella Shimino, Nicholas Caniglio, Jessica Kudzic, Sofia Elinardo, Sarah El Harisi, Genevieve Ewers, Carter Ferrex, Jackson Fleege, William Garrett, Megan Hammer, Helen Gillick, Ava Judge, Evan Judge, Logan Kaminsky, Cecilia Kane, Troy Karunzos, Hannah Kelly, Lauren Kinney, Zachariah Kozer, Mia Kursanik, Peyton Kreza, Kyle Keun, Clara Kwikowski, Adam Labuda, Sebastian Lesnicki, Ava Magana, David Markusek, Julian Morolda, Emily Ann Maurey, Zachary Mueller, Aiden Nolting, Audrey Nanti, Claudia O'Grady, Kristin Palowski, Charles Plouffe, Corey Patampa, Isabel Purpura, Moise Kreshi, Ethan Rudman, Kayla Shay, Beznik Shwaypie, Jacob Skiba, Nicholas Skiba, Kane Stikinas, Sidney Stewart, Naupan Tawi Payaro, Alexa Trauer, Ashley Von Ashley Vandra, Elise Broom, Natalie Watzke, Colin Williams, Alexis Rona, and Madison Young. Congratulations to all of our Illinois State Scholars.
All right, hey, I'd like to indulge you, look at all these great people. Can we give all of these young people one last time? A huge round of applause. As a career high school educator, I don't know about you, but I spend a lot of time asking myself, what did I do in high school? I just ran track, that's about it. One last special recognition, thank you for indulging me and our Board of Education. School Board members, once again, amazing people. And we have a final resolution tonight regarding Mr. Michael Lewandowski and a gift for him. Mr. Lewandowski, think about this, has served on our Board of Education since 1999. That's amazing, that's 24 years. And we felt as he kind of wraps up his Board of Education career that it was appropriate, especially in the eyes of an audience like this. This is his last regular Board of Education meeting, to appreciate him, to thank him, and to read this resolution. So come on down, Michael Lewandowski, you have to stand up here too. My grandmother said, you just stand there and smile. That's what I've tried to do my whole life. Resolution recognizing Mr. Michael Lewandowski for his service to the Board of Education for 24 years. Whereas Michael Lewandowski, a Lockport Township High School District 205 alumnus, was elected to the School Board in April, 1999. He has served on the Illinois Association of School Boards Governing Board as an LTHS delegate and served as Director-at-Large for the Illinois Association of School Boards Three Rivers Division. And whereas Mr. Michael Lewandowski has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, and community by achieving this respected title of Lockport Township High School District 205 Board Member. The Board of Education, the administration, and staff would like to thank you for your 24 years of service to the community and students of LTHS. Now therefore being resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this day, seventeenth day of April, 2023. Congratulations, Michael. Thanks so much for calling your service. We have one last thing, we got to vote on these resolutions, so I'm going to turn it back over to Mrs. Lopez Keneva, so she can take the roll call with our board and then we'll wrap up our evening together.
Thank you. All right, yes, I just also want to publicly also thank Mr. Richard Ives, he's not here tonight, but he also served on our School Board and now he's moved on to greater places, I believe, now in South Carolina. So, but yes, but I wanted to publicly thank him for all his years of service to the School Board. All right, with that, further ado, I just need a motion to accept these resolutions. All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shawn, second by Mr. Travis. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to congratulate again all the students, our Eagle Scouts, Acapellas. I mean, it was just amazing, especially to see the great number of AP Scholars here. It is amazing, as Dr. McBride said, we have not met in our porter room for such a long time because we've had so many recognitions of students. But thank you, thank you and congratulations, parents. I also congratulate you also for your students. With that, further ado, I think we'll have a five-minute recess. Thank you.
We're still waiting for our student government, students, but I think, oh, here they come. All right. Okay. Oh, no, that's okay.
You know, when you're stars, you know, you've just got so many engagements. And thanks, guys, for grabbing a few extra chairs, we appreciate it.
Hello, all. So first thing we want to talk about tonight is upcoming for us. This Wednesday, we'll start our Student Government Board elections. It'll be a different scene next year because we will have no returning members, being all five of us fills out this packet. They need forty to fifty signatures from their peers, a signature from their guidance counselor, a signature from their dean, parent approval, and then that process will be selected once there's enough candidates and whatnot.
And then with all the candidates, then we'll create a ballot and then for about a week, week and a half, when voting's out, they can advertise and like campaign and make posters and hang them up so people can like see that they're running. And then they'll choose four or five, depending on how many people were on the ballot. And we'll, they'll be chosen by the end of the year so we can like talk to them about like next year responsibilities. And then also anyone can run, you don't need to be in student government, it's open to the whole student body. And student body and student government vote, so everyone gets the vote too.
And then on the topic of us all being seniors, we're all excited for, of course, prom, which is coming up very soon. It's less than two weeks away from part of my perspective and everyone else's, we've talked to, everyone seems very excited about it, of course, being continuing to be at the Museum of Science of Industry. We've talked, the issue though is transportation getting there because it is all the way in downtown Chicago. Groups have been taking, talked about taking limousines or party buses there. Yeah.
And LTHS is a little unique in this aspect because a lot of other schools provide transportation. So I think a lot of students like that they get to ride with their friends on a bus or in a limousine. However, it is quite the task to file, because it'd be quite the task to file and a lot of people into our buses, given our student body. But either way, the excitement about prom is definitely real as people are getting their tuxes and dresses finally altered and getting those last minute fixes before prom comes.
And finally, we were very excited to hear that you guys have accepted the resolution to accept at least one new member of the Board, a student member. We think that'd be a great idea, it looks great on college resumes and applications. So it's great that you guys are supporting our students like that. I think it'd be a great position for someone who may not make our Student Government Board or NHS Board, but is still very involved in the climate and culture here at our school. So we're very excited about that. I think it'll be a great addition to the School Board and a great way to support our students.
We're looking to advertise that also through our Google Classroom and in our next following meetings. We think the more that we can advertise it sooner, the more people would be interested in it and we'd be get more people interviewed and whatnot.
I believe you're all seniors, so.
That is correct.
How's that going for you right now? Like, how are you doing? You know, as seniors with what, six, seven weeks to go? And the first seniors who will be out early. We can see how upset you are.
Well, tell us what's your college plans?
I'm going to be attending the University of Florida in the fall. I'm going to be majoring in business, minoring in actuarial science, hoping to become an actuary in the future. But as of right now, not really much is going on because scholarship deadlines are passed and school's sort of dwindling down towards the final projects and stuff, but.
I'm ready to graduate, but I, for the fall, I committed to Elmhurst University for track and field and then I'm going to major in nursing and minor in psychology.
I have committed to the University of Alabama. I will be studying business management as well as Spanish. As much as I am ready to graduate, senior year is still in full swing for me with lacrosse season and everything else we have coming up for the end of the year, but yeah, very busy, but still very excited.
And I'm committed to Purdue University for biomedical engineering with a focus in pre-medicine. And I'm also in lacrosse season right now, so senior is kind of ending with some fun and so I'm still trying to finish strong.
I'm very ready, very ready to graduate. I'm going to be attending the University of Illinois this fall. I'm currently undeclared, but I'm looking to transfer over to their business school as soon as possible. If that doesn't work, maybe possibly something in civil engineering. Yeah.
I have a question for you guys, like what's one fun thing you guys want to do in college?
I want to join club sports.
Yeah?
I was involved in golf all four years here and I would love to join their club golf team if I could. That'd be very fun for me.
Yeah, or even intermurals too, because I know a lot of colleges do that too.
I might be joining, I might be looking to join like student radio at U of I, I'm just thinking about it.
I'm with Kyle, I kind of am excited for club lacrosse at Purdue, for sure.
Yeah, there's a lot of great student organizations at the University of Alabama, so there's a list I'm planning on doing.
Congratulations. We're seeing you on graduation day.
Thank you.
That doesn't make me want to go back to college. I don't want to.
Right, how about it, right?
I don't have a lot to report tonight, just, you know, we're busy in our interview season. You know, congratulations to all the students who were recognized tonight, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say that I'm sure a teacher or a club sponsor or somebody played a role in that path. So, you know, it's great to see events like that take place and, you know, together we succeed, so that's all I have today. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people behind, you know, that kind of academic success. And just for the public, Illinois State Scholars is primarily a measure of academic success from the Illinois Student Assistance Committee, Commission. So that is, you know, as you said, Mrs. Kishline, you know, a string of anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-seven teachers, right? Just doesn't happen by itself, right?
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, IASB report, Ms. Johnson?
Okay, I guess I'm up. Um, as far as I know, we do have a new, what do they call it, field person?
Oh, field service.
Field service person. I haven't, I think she's the lady that came when we did the board. Oh, you're okay? So personally, she hadn't come out to introduce herself, but that's okay. What's looming soon is going to be the Triple I. You know, it's April, but that time will be here sooner than you think.
It's not wish away the summer, all right?
Huh?
What summer, it snowed earlier today.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, and then the only other thing here, unless, I haven't seen any real news or stuff out in the emails lately, so, but the other thing is Bob, we're going to cover our board session for today.
Right, and the only other thing, just for the public, IASB is Illinois Association of School Boards, the Triple I is a conference, three organizations, the state superintendents, the organization that Mrs. Kline and I belong to, the state chief school business officials, and then the state school board conference holds a joint conference every year, same time of November. One personal announcement, I'm glad that I'm presenting again, I proposed a presentation, Board members know I usually Board members know I usually try to, try to do presentations, and, and I'm doing that. You know, so excited about that a- as well.
What are you presenting?
I am presenting on diversity, equity, inclusion, and some work that we've done over the past, oh, year, year and a half, with two individuals and, and preparing leaders. How do you prepare leaders to, to have those kind of conversations, do that kind of work? And maybe a different definition than most people are used to, so. Just, we are gonna do, kind of finish this out, these, again, were at your, the protocols that you decided on at the December fifth self-evaluation. And we specifically just nine, ten, and eleven, really to kind of wrap up this review. And, and one of the things we do, we all have a folder as members and people sitting at this table, and we just keep these protocols in front of us, just as, as a reminder of how you as board members decided you wanted to function as a public body. Board meetings in particular, when we did this one, was, was talking about public comment, and the importance of public comment. And, and the idea, we, when we, when we worked with Lori Grant, the idea of a meeting in public as opposed to a town hall. And that's a difference that is an important difference. School boards meet so that the meeting that you have with each other is, is in public. People can come, they can visit, they can observe. But it, but it isn't a town hall or, or just open forum, and then the board want to remind itself to, to kind of keep that in mind. Affirming, you know, we want to have the public comment, you kept your five limit time limit, five minutes. That doesn't sound like a lot of time, but the sort of standard I've been doing is three minutes. So appreciate that five-minute limit, it doesn't put people as much under the gun. You agree to make public comment procedures clear. It's board president who really conducts public comment, and then the, the board president responds. You know, if there's a time when the board president speaks, the board president speaks to folks that might participate in, in public comment. And then occasionally, I might be a person who's a point of clarification if there is some type of point of order or clarification for a, a public comment. School visits, interesting, you know, as many board members know, weekly, I send you an update. I encourage you to be involved in the type of things that we're doing. Tomorrow night, I'm doing at Central Campus, just a walk and talk of Central Campus at 6:30 PM. I know your schedules are full, you have a meeting tonight, I know some of you have business travel this week. Might not be able to come, but the invitation is always there for board members to, to be there. Institute days, oftentimes, you'll get information from me about different events at school. So you're encouraged. If you're wishing to come see the, do a school visit, generally contact me so that I can steward you and make sure that, that you get in without any kind of, you know, issue, and what door to go in, and all those things. We always notify the building principal, former school principal myself, I appreciate that. Check-in procedures, campus guidelines, not there for evaluation, and not to give direction, or acceptance of, you know, any kind of gifts. We have Dr. Sandra Shimon Rogers, who's a newly elected school board member, but you have to shop to be on the team. You have to shop in the Porter store. And Mr. Borsmo, who's also in our audience, well, you'll have to shop in the Porter store too, because you gotta take the, you know, you gotta wear the team clothing. And we'll talk about that, you know, a little bit later on. And always just being clear that the capacity that you're in, whether you're acting as a board member, you're acting as a parent, you're acting, in what capacity you're, you're acting in. And then finally, number eleven, no surprises. We try not to surprise each other, we're human beings, things come up. But just trying to make sure that in between meetings, there, there isn't a surprise that takes place. Questions are asked, information is shared, all of those kind of issues. I don't think anybody wants to comment on any of these, you know, you've tasked me with just reviewing them.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, foundation report.
Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Angela.
Just going to kind of roll over, one of the highlights from the report I submitted was, we're really excited that so many students applied for scholarships this year. We've had a big push to try and encourage as much participation as we can. Not only did we have more scholarships for them, more students applied. So it's just offering more opportunities. As the foundation itself, we will give away like nineteen of those scholarships, so it's just nice to have more than nineteen students apply for those nineteen scholarships. So we're really excited about that and hope to see more participation in that in the future. Along the same lines of being excited about people participating in things, we have right now, almost two hundred students have nominated their teachers for our Mildred and William Jackson Award. That's an award where teachers are recognized at the end of the year, that gives something back foundation, funds a, an award for that teacher. And it's exciting to see so many kids take the time to recognize their teachers. You can tell that groups of them may have gotten together to make sure that there's more than one, as they kind of come in all together. But I think that that's great, they've, they were talking about someone that's important to them and recognizing them through that channel. So we're really, really pleased with how many students are taking the opportunity to do that. Two things that aren't on that sheet, the foundation is gonna be sponsoring some, the city of Lockport is doing some banners of veterans around town, and the, the foundation is going to be sponsoring a couple of those banners. So we're excited to participate in that, we were excited to learn about it, and right away, the foundation board wanted to participate to support that initiative. And then most, the most recent thing that we have on the, on the docket is that we're looking to continue to involve the community in things that we do. So this summer, we're planning to and hoping to still host some free movie nights at, at Porter Stadium. There's a little bit of logistics that needs to go in that. We haven't announced it to the public yet, so you guys are the first to know. But our board really wanted to try and keep the idea of community in the foundation, so to try and host something along those lines, to bring people in, maybe that aren't students, that don't normally get to be on our facility. So that's kind of it for me, if you guys have questions, ideas?
Doesn't the city of Lockport do movie night in the square?
They do, I, I don't know if they do anymore, I know they used to, but I don't, they're doing, I know they're doing like live music down by Gallery Seven, they're doing, that, that's coming back this year. And I will say that they're also doing this illuminations project, which is really cool. And the high school actually is featured in it, which is really nice.
We, a number of us went to the State of the City address, Angela, Jeanette, Mrs. Lopez-Kneevah, myself. Very ambitious, city of Lockport, very ambitious agenda of events this summer. And, you know, I'm glad you're taking it, Angela, the, you go to the city of Lockport website, very moving. Just these banners are gonna be in downtown, a hundred and fifty dollars to honor a veteran. So thanks for picking up on that, I think that's a neat project in downtown Lockport, to see people who've served our country, and memorialize them, and the idea is to have those up by Memorial Day, so, pretty amazing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative report.
Legislative report, it's, it's busy, busy, busy in Springfield, as I mentioned. And I did not put all of the bills that are, that are moving around in terms of education. I put some that we've been very carefully watching. And as the board knows, we belong to two organizations, the High School District Organization of Illinois, and then Scope, which are both organizations that look at legislation, review legislation for districts, give us an idea of what the impact of that legislation could be. One is a bill that we're, we're following in terms of teacher tenure. In essence, what this bill does is it lowers tenure from, from four years to, to three years. It's still in committee, it hasn't moved out of committee yet. There is also a, a piece of legislation that I don't believe, the way that we keep our finances, on district reserves, that if a district is two point five times its annual budget. So for us, that would be almost, if we had, had in reserve, two hundred million dollars, then there would have to be a plan filed with ISBE to reduce that down. Your goal of six to twelve months cash on hand really doesn't put you in that range, and you would have to be at that place for three consecutive fiscal years. So watching that, I, I, the way that we do our finances, I don't believe it would impact us. There's an initiative by Senate Leader Murphy. This is, what this means hasn't been clear, racism-free schools, I think the title obviously means a lot. We all want to be racism-free schools, but the bill itself, what that means, what its, its requirements of districts, just haven't been clear yet. It's in conversation and in committee. The minimum salary bill, yeah.
Yeah, I thought racism was already not allowed in schools for years.
We have, we have a huge policy architecture, you're right, Mr. Navara, that, you know, from what we do in HR, from what we do, human dignity, diversity, so it's, it's somewhat unclear. And we have governing bodies, right, that have legal regulations, Illinois Department of Human Rights, ISBE, the governor's office. So this has been.
You also have cancel culture, so just a little bit of.
Yeah, it's an unclear bill. I, I wish I could tell you I knew more about it, but I haven't found anyone. When I saw it, I reached out to High School District Organization, a couple other superintendents. I'm not really sure what, what it will entail, so. The minimum salary bill, I've mentioned this to board members, we're really looking at this. This would in essence, every position in our district, it would create a scaffold to get every position that's hourly above twenty dollars an hour. Mrs. Croy has already reported to the, to her association what that would mean for us, and how that would, would impact us. And this would be across the board. So it's still in committee, it's not moving, but it's one that we're keeping our eye on. There is a halal and kosher food bill, it, it is moving forward. It's impacting federal launches, could have an impact in, in our district, and for quest food service that passed, because we do have quite a few Muslim students. So we might have to offer a halal, we'd have to examine if we would have someone, anyone who would want a kosher diet. And then this is, yeah.
Question about that, is it part of halal that the food also, or I can't remember if it's kosher or halal, but one of them, you can't have like pork prepared in the same vicinity?
That's true for halal and for kosher food as well. Different preparations, different food, but, but in both traditions, pork is, is not part of the consumption.
Pork cannot even be served in the same vicinity as it, so how do we plan to do that? Because if we have hot dogs that just.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a plan right now, because we don't have a bill quite yet. You know, once, usually what happens with a bill like this, sometimes it can be very detailed. Sometimes it can be a bill that simply mandates that there has to be a halal kosher offering. Sometimes it mandates, here's how you work with students to determine if there's an interest. But if we did offer a halal, for example, menu offering, we would have to do all that separation.
We would have to do a completely different room to prepare that food.
Right, but what I would say, Mr. Navara, is we're fairly expert at that, because we already, right now, probably the most consequential in school food service, where all of the laws passed almost a decade ago about allergies.
Really?
So we're, quest food service, like all food service providers are, are expert. You know, because you had pine nut, peanut, peanut oil, for example, peanuts and more than you can even imagine. And, you know, that can be literally deadly for a student who has a severe peanut allergy. So we already have some expertise at separating food on that way. So to be continued, really, on that. And then final, a senate bill, this is, Senator Kern is supporting this, is that if, if a school board decides to sell a piece of property it owns, you need a minimum of three appraisals before you set a price for that property, so. So that's what's going on in Springfield. Any more, those are great questions. Any other questions about? Uh, yeah, I'll just jump into, next item on our agenda is just follow-up on, on public comment. For board members, just, you know, we had one public comment last month, and the speaker, actually, Mrs. Lopez-Kneevah did the formal response, so please feel free to add in. The speaker had two concerns last month. One was over something I had mentioned in February about a possible dinner and workshop that would involve our seven feeder districts and us, the total Lockport area school districts, superintendent and board president. We had thought about having a dinner to connect, network, talk about practices, talk about just, just sharing, really. And in some ways, this came out from an idea you very briefly discussed, that we learned about in triple I this year, that some high school district school boards appoint liaisons to their feeder districts. You know, for example, we have seven feeder districts, we have seven school board members. So just, you know, the importance of being connected, and, and I had mentioned that. And then the second concern the person raised was the practice that you have, which is a very common practice in Illinois, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know a school district that doesn't use this practice, of the board uses a superintendent as a spokesperson to respond to public comment. So just in response to that, you know, one thing that we try to do, for example, the dinner and workshop, quite actually, we're, we're not gonna hold that this spring. Talking with my superintendent colleagues, we just feel because of some events recently, we are as superintendents actually meeting on Thursday, we're really gonna focus this spring on safety. In particular, if any one of our seven districts or us had a real safety incident, we have so many resources that we could share and we could help. For example, up in Highland Park, when there was that shooting, that was in July, school wasn't in session. But really, the high school district in Highland Park and the elementary district became sites of refuge, became sites that people were picked up and sent home, reunification sites, and then eventually counseling sites. And we know we have so many resources where we could help each other out, if any one of us fell prey to, to a school incident like that. So we've replaced that dinner. But just like I mentioned, that focus on safety, we'll always mention something in public, like the idea of that dinner, so people know, hey, this is what we are thinking of. There's a reference I made to the Open Meetings Act, we always want the public to know, what is a meeting that's under the Open Meetings Act, where there's a quorum of board members, a vote might be taken, the public should have access to the conversation. And just making a distinction that a dinner like that wouldn't be covered on the Open Meetings Act. There wouldn't be business conducted, there's not a quorum, no voting is taking place. Yeah, Mrs. Johnson?
I'd like to make a request.
You bet.
Whenever, as we speak, it's one through the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
Typically, you respond via email through, to all, including the board members. Where when our presidents respond, we don't know about it. So maybe, if nothing else, just knowledge of the fact.
Got it.
So that way we are aware.
Understood, yeah. And, and that, that also might be one, one reason why the superintendent responds, because I'm very conscious that, you know, one of your norms and protocols is that one person knows, everybody knows, right? You know, I'm just very conscious of that. And then maybe with your permission, kind of go into that second concern about the superintendent responding. You know, it, it, it's, it's really a form of governance. No individual board member has any power outside of the whole board. And I would not recommend to you that it would be good governance, you have to decide as board members, if each of you individually responded to someone in public comment. As you know, oftentimes in the public comment, we've discussed the issue that, that's been presented. It's been in your update, you've had an opportunity for questions, you've spoken to me. Or I'll reach out to the president and say, hey, where's the board at? Oftentimes, we'll reach out to you and say, where are you at, in order to form a response. Sometimes, we'll hear about something for the first time, someone will bring a concern to us. And the purpose of the superintendent responding is to clarify, what's the solution the person wants? How, how do you want to solve this problem, so that I can then bring to you, this is the solution that an individual wants? Just looking at tonight's public comment, I think we're gonna hear someone proposing something to you that they, they want you to think about, and it's gonna call on me to do some research. And then when I follow up with this person, I'll say, hey, what, what'll be some solutions? And the initial intake is so that I can do some work with you, to say, here. And the initial intake is so that I can do some work with you, to say, here's the issue at hand, what do, what do you think as a board? What would you like me to do as a superintendent? So, it's to have a clear point of communication. Any, you know, any additional thoughts, like, like, uh, Mrs. Johnson share?
All right. And then, to public comments.
All right. At each regular open meetings, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is not customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. This time, we have, uh, Cece De Somon, when I pronounce that right? No, okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is an invitation to all of you. And I understand Kathleen, Kathleen Burke was here a while back, I, I didn't know that she was here. However, I'm a precinct commitment with the, uh, Lockport Township Republican Organization, and, um, I'm also a member of the Will County Substance Abuse Coalition. So, um, I'd like to invite you all, everybody in the room, on May first, to Coombs Corner at six thirty, and we're doing an opioid awareness expo to let everybody know what's really going on in, in the area. And, uh, the reason I got involved is because a very sweet young neighbor of mine overdosed. And, um, I only knew her for a year, she's a very sweet young woman, and, uh, uh, now I've gotten to know, uh, one of her former boyfriends, who, um, is dealing with the same issue and has been in big trouble, so, um, with opioids. So, I've gotten very involved with the, uh, reasons why, how to help them, how to help them overcome. And, um, I'd like to invite you to Coombs Corner, May first, six thirty, it's a Monday night. And our featured presenters are Robert Bell, he's a retired, just recently retired DEA special agent in charge of the Chicago DEA office. Also, Terry Lemming, former Lockport Chief of Police. They will both be presenting all the information you'll need to find out how severe this problem really is. And I'm really, really hoping you and leadership and everybody that's here will, will come out and learn more. And we're also gonna have the Hidden and Plain Site Trailer parked right out in front. It's a unique, um, exhibit that you'd wanna go into and see what it's all about, has to do with everything involved. And, um, um, I'm sure, we may eat, be adding even more information or even maybe, um, video or something to it, we're still kinda working on a little bit, but overall, it's gonna be jam-packed with information to help save lives. Because it's, it's a very severe problem with the opioids, so I really hope you all come out and, and see it, okay? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, would like an invitation, like, a poster, anybody, uh?
Sure, hand one to everybody. Yeah, and if, maybe, Mr. Thomas, if you just put it, uh, in Ms. Johnson's, we can kinda pass it around.
Thank you.
I know we don't make, uh, comments, but that Hidden and Plain Site Trailer, if you've never been in it, you should go, uh-
Thank you.
Go check it out.
And, and just one, just one point of clarification, just for the public and for our speaker, board might remember that you just authorized us to have Narcan. Narcan is now on all of our, you know, will be on all of our buses, will be available throughout, you know, East Campus, Central Campus. Dr. Huntington, uh, really led the way on that as a recognition of the difficulty of this problem. Because it's a public facility, if, if, at any time, a meeting like this, our students, someone in the parking lot, that, having that Narcan present could, could save a life and help first responders so more than just having Narcan, um, in our nurses' office or with our school resource officers. So, I thought that was a very wise decision on the part of the board to prove that.
I also, I believe when I was a freshman in high school, there was an incident where I believe an upperclassman did overdose from heroin, like, years ago.
Thank you. All right, moving on, um, we have no communications, and you have there on your Freedom of Information requests. And moving on to our approval items, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty, twenty twenty-three Regular Board of Education meeting minutes and the March twenty, twenty twenty-three Regular Board of Education meeting closed session minutes?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those minutes? Okay, roll call.
Travis?
Someone here, someone saying.
Bless you.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, moving on to our Treasurers Report and Stephen Ford.
And as Mrs. Kroy comes, uh, to the table, uh, the past few months, in my superintendent report, I've been reviewing a board goal with you. And, um, we thought more appropriate, um, Stephanie's gonna share the, the board goal as part of your Treasurers Report, the customary reports you have, but she's also gonna share her goal, so that goal presentation is actually going to occur in this, um, you know, item on our agenda rather than my superintendent report. So, just to, to keep on moving along those board goals and refreshing ourselves on them, so.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. Good evening, everyone. As you take a look at our Treasurers Report this month, um, I'd like to, to point out a few things. I'm, as I've done the last couple months, I'm continuing to point out the cash flow and watching it go down as we go through the months where we've previously collected taxes that are funding this activity, right? So, um, looking at the cash flow statement, um, you, you'll see that we, you know, we've got another drop of about five million, um, for the month of March. March had three payrolls in it, so that's why the activity is more than previous months. With payroll being one of our, you know, the district's biggest expense, that's, that's why you see it looks, if you look at the disbursements for the month, they're significantly higher than some of the previous months. Couple pages down at the Statement of Position, um, I'll bring this back up when we talk about the board, when I talk about the board goal at the end of the, the presentation, but, um, along with the depletion of, um, the cash balances, obviously, the month's cash on hand also goes down with that. So, um, operating funds, month's cash on hand at this point is nine, still within the board goals. So, you can, you can see that along the bottom of the Statement of Position. The other couple of things that I tend to look at, especially this time of year, is whether we're on track with collecting of revenue and collecting and spending of the expenditures compared to the budget. This would be the month that I would've proposed a tentative amended budget if I thought that we weren't tracking okay. So, I did not, there's no tentative budget a, a, amendment on the agenda, so I think we'll be fine with the way the budget is tracking. So, looking at the revenue report, um, it, it, there, if you compare the revenue report to the expenditure report, you see that there's a discrepancy between the collection, of course, and that just again supports the same thing I've been saying about the, the taxes. We're about fifty, little over fifty percent collection of revenue, which is to be expected, because we collected half of the, the property taxes. You know, the finishing up the twenty twenty-two levy, or twenty twenty-one levy, we'll be starting to collect the twenty twenty-two levy in the spring. That'll be the other half of the bulk of the revenue. The expenditures were right on track at seventy-two percent total, um, we're three quarters of the way done with the year. So, we're right about where I think we should be at this point. Hopefully, a little bit under budget, we'll come in a little bit under budget, looking the way it is right now. So, finally, I wanna go back to, like Dr. McBride said, our, um, facility and finance goals. Our goal is, God bless you, to maintain, um, between six and twelve months' cash on hand for the operating funds of the district over well, over, overall, as well as by fund, which is why, on the Statement of Position, I've got it listed for you by fund as well as the overall operating on the, the one far corner. So, what does that mean, right? Like, what does the, um, maintaining six to twelve months' cash on hand mean to the district? Looking at that, what, what is what we were talking about as a linchpin? The linchpin, as we talked more about it, um, there are a couple of pieces, right? Other than the property tax collection ser, um, process, one of the other big pieces of our revenue is the, the fees, right? All of our parents have a student fee. That fee process is one of the linchpins. The other piece is transparency and maintaining this, the solvency as we spend our, our, um, our funds. And trying to make sure those funds support what the prod, the procedures and the, um, the programs that people like Dr. Christopher will talk about, um, and Dr. Huntington and the principals. They talk about all the programs, and we wanna make sure that our funds are supporting those, right? So, the couple of things that we wanted to focus on this year, that my department, the business office, that supports this six to twelve months' cash on hand goal, a couple of things we wanted to look at then to kinda focus on that linchpin are the fee collection process, as well as some of our bigger expenditures. This time, we told, we chose to look at the, um, um, lunches, right? The lunch process and procedures, and how can we make that as equitable as possi, as possible and spend the money where the kids want it, right? So, it, back in March, um, both of the, the buildings, um, Dr. Green and Dr. Green, got, gathered some students so that they can meet with the cafeteria managers, and we got some feedback, uh, from the students on the program. So, I'm hoping to, you know, involve that in our process for the next school year and maybe grow that as well, because that will bring the student voice into one of our, one of our, um, big programs that supports them, right? We need to make sure our students are nourished well, so that they can focus on what we're trying to, to teach them. The other piece is the school, um, fee collection process, and my office is very heavily into that, the start of that process right now. So, this is the time of year that we apply fees to accounts for next year. And so, we were, we were looking at trying to improve that process and make it easier on our parents, make our communication regarding that process, um, better for our parents. So, in that process, we are, um, trying to make less paperwork for parents that, um, that qualify for fee waivers. So, we're working through that process now to try and make that more, um, more smooth for them. And then, in the same, probably at the same time, communicate out the statements and, um, when things are due through multiple, um, platforms. Parent Square and Parents, the use of Parent Square, adding that to something that we, um, communicated regarding fees will make it so that parents can receive that communication in their home language, if they choose that, as opposed to English, if it's something other than English. So, tho, those are, those are the main pieces that we were working on this year to try and work on those, um, like, the two, two of the big pieces that we're trying to, um, associate that goal with. Are there any questions about that one-page communication and, yeah?
You, since you was looking at the lunches?
Mm-hmm.
I had heard, not necessarily in Lockport, but sometime, uh, for the low-income free and reduced lunch, sometimes the parents don't fill out the information. So, there are students potentially that qualify and, and most likely need lunch. But then, because the parents need to sign something, it doesn't get done. Have you, did you look at that and see what we can do to, cause you know, our goal is to, no, a student that's walking around hungry is not necessarily a good student, you know?
That is exactly what we're looking at.
Angry, that makes them, you know, not wanna do the work and stuff.
That is exactly what we're looking at. So, instead of having our parents fill out forms, we're looking at trying to make sure that we can get some, what, what's considered a direct certification process. We're trying to make sure that we can get the information that is shared through other parts of the government. So, last year, we were on the National School Lunch Program, right? As part of that program, we had access to the direct certification process. What that means is, when our families that may have other needs and they apply for help through the government, um, there's a couple of different programs that qualify, they automatically will be, uh, will be approved for free meals here, as well as a fee waiver. So, that process, we're trying to streamline, so that they don't have to fill anything out and their students still avail, still a, able to get the free meal.
Yeah, and that way, also, don't make them feel bad, the students, you know?
Right. And then, then that way, it's just on the accounts, students use their ID, there's no identification, because a student who's paying is also using that same ID.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Mm-hmm, yeah, good question. Any other questions about that process? Yeah, we're working through some, some kinks about that. I'm hopeful that in the future here, we can even extend, um, you know, even make it easier for all parents, um, uh, the fee process, because we're, we're looking to potentially integrate it with some of the other systems that the parents get in, um, get, or in, for example, using the parent portal for Infinite Campus. So, we're, we're hoping to, right now, our fee collection process is kinda separate. And we're hoping to make that all much more efficient and, um, streamlined for parents.
And maybe just to add, you know, for the board, and, and Mrs. Kroy's brought up, Mrs. Johnson's brought up, you know, at a very high level, if you go back to our financials, those, those deal in the millions. But this goal is really trying to bring it down to acknowledge on the student level, fees and food. Those are two things that can enfranchise a child into the educational process or can disenfranchise a child in the educational process, sometimes unnoticed by the educational institution. So, what we're trying to do with this goal is really be attentive to our systems, humanize those systems, so that, as you said, Mrs. Johnson, a student who would automatically enroll for free and reduced lunch has access to those, to, to food, and that students that fees might be a source of stress or a blocker, that's not the intention of the board, that it's an anxiety creator, um, that we can work through that as well, because we know that those can really block an equitable access to what we offer.
Yeah, because if a parent's gonna, they most likely will fill out something to, to get a reduced, uh, fees or no fees, right? Maybe in that process, that's a red flag to say, oh, you know, this kid also.
Yes, the assistant principals, um, work with the individual on top of, that's, that's the, the next piece, on top of this, this other process, if there are individual circumstances, the assistant principals work with those, those families and those students to make sure that they get what they need. So, the, the, the last piece about this is the transparency, and as the board knows that, um, I, I mean, our Treasurers Report is lengthy, and there's a lot of numbers and data there, but that's purposeful. It's purposeful so that everything that our office is doing is out there for the public to see, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Kroy.
Then, do I have a motion to approve the March twenty twenty-three Treasurers Report? Some of-
I'll second it.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. All right, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
I'd like to stay, staying, staying on that one.
You, you got it, Mr. Travis, this is material presented right now to you.
That's what I thought, yes. Yes.
Yeah. And Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Their superintendent reports.
All right, a few things, uh, before we ask you, um, uh, three, five presenters, um, uh, to join us. One, uh, we did not have a chance last month, you approved a brand-new assistant principal, and that individual, um, was, was traveling on behalf of the district. So, to put our hands together for Mr., excuse me, I mispronounced his name, Dr. Jason Osbald, uh, who will be taking over for Trish Sermon. And, uh, since your appointment, he successfully, uh, defended hi, his dissertation. Also, it's a really good time just to point out, you know, when you see all of those students that we just acknowledged, oftentimes, the people organizing that, marshaling that, getting the students ready are, you know, Jen Webray, Trish Sermon, uh, and Matt Bartley. So, really, really appreciate them, and to Mrs. Kishline's, um, uh, point, you know, just think about all- about all those students you saw who were scholars and the teachers behind them are off the record. Chad Getz, think about that, the top a cappella ensemble for, in Illinois for three years in a row, you know, excellence is not an accident or just being charming for judges. So just that, that human element that goes, goes behind it. And thank you for Illinois State's Councilors, to Dr. Christopher O and her assistant Terry Lozinski for really orchestrating that and doing all the communication on that. Just a couple of other things, really, the main thing I'd like to ask the board to focus on in this superintendent's report is something we've talked about for quite some time, which is an organization I've shared with you for over two years, Equal Opportunity Schools. And you're going to hear a presentation on it, so I don't intend to steal that thunder, but before we do that, just some congratulations, think about this, our Vex Robotics team will shortly be going to the world championships in Dallas, Texas. Our Winter Guard team seems to be taking the country by storm. They are state champions. We didn't acknowledge them tonight because they are, they were off to a national and a world competition as well. And then a little later in the agenda, we're also going to talk about overseas travel. Tonight, we're going to propose two trips that we're going to ask the board to approve and do a formal presentation. You'll hear about equal opportunity schools, you'll hear about the overseas travel. We'll be asking you in an action item to approve those later after, after some discussion. Very briefly, just a few things that are coming up, District Management Group, I've shared with you privately that, that's an organization that we belong to. At their recent superintendent summit, we get a briefing, District Management Group is really the Harvard Business School. There were four trends that they predicted over the next three years that superintendents and school boards should be aware of, politicization of school boards, economic challenges that they see down the line in 2024 and 2025. I think your work on the tax levy, proving a levy that will meet our costs, won't open up deficit spending while still reducing the tax rate for the 12th year in a row is the kind of planning that they recommended. They're seeing some things in the present economy and the private sector that will impact in 2024, 2025, the public economy, and that's usually how it goes, mental health challenges of, of school-aged youth and their parents in many ways, and then a fiscal cliff. All of the COVID era grant funding that we've seen is, is ending in 2024 and they sounded a warning to districts that to wean yourself off of that grant funding because it won't be around forever. We've really already done that in our district. We're continuing to move forward with Central Campus Conversations. On April 6, we had a visioning meeting all day long. Thank you to DLA Architects, Stephanie Kroy, Bill Thompson. We listened as staff members over six periods, Mrs. Lopez Caneva came, described what's possible at, at Central. If we renovated, reinvigorated, renewed that, that 114-year-old facility, I'll be doing just an open meeting tomorrow night for any community members that would like to come. So without further ado, let's have our presenters and I'll do a proper introduction. I apologize, Mr. Oster, we need one more chair. Our, our, our board, our student board members were very thorough. You're going to hear from Dr. Lori Christopher O, you're going to hear from Josh Oster, who is our AP, one of our AP coordinators and Special Education Department Chair. And then you're also going to hear from a colleague I really hold in high regard and in my career, had the opportunity to work with for two years, that's Tracy Conrad. She's the Vice President of Programs from Equal Opportunity Schools. Just to lay out there, what does a partnership, a two-year partnership, why would I bring that to the board? And as board members know, if it's a multi-year partnership, you do have to approve it. One, academically, I would suggest that if we start this partnership, that it's not a one-year investment. Two, financially, there's a savings involved if we have a two-year partnership. So I am going to let this group do their work and you tell me when, oh, good. Start talking, I will. If anybody wonders if we have cybersecurity, safety, you're seeing it right now, so keep going.
So we're excited to be here tonight to share with you about partnership opportunity with Equal Opportunity Schools, Lori Christopher O, Assistant Superintendent. And I'm going to kind of give you the overview, how it connects to a board goal. I'm joined here with Josh Oster, who is Special Ed Department Chair. He's also one of our AP Advisors, Advanced Placement Coordinator, helping to get more students into our AP programming. But he is also here tonight. Josh is in his doctoral program, so this gives him one of those opportunities. I'm also happy to be joined with Dr. Tracy Conrad. Tracy is Vice President and while Josh will talk to you about some of the things we have done to get more students in AP, Tracy will talk about some of the logistics of what EOS can do for us. So, Dr. McBride, you can advance it to the board goal slide. So, you know, we've been working really hard on this goal and specifically in all aspects of it. I've come to talk to you about work we've done with pathways. I've talked to you about employment. I've talked to you about apprenticeship. I've talked to you about a career week and certainly college credit has come up repeatedly. Dr. McBride talked a lot to you about that in October and what we saw with achievement reports. So we've really tried to dig deep and to be thoughtful in how can we create these opportunities for students. And the board is really aware of our partnership with Lewis University and how we're offering some dual enrollment programming. But we continue to ponder, who are we missing? Like what are the students we haven't tapped into to get them into the right classes that set them on a pathway to know, not only have that college credit, but to something Mr. Navarro talks about, to know like, yep, this is what I want to do in my future, or no, this is not what I want to do in my future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Oster.
So I, here you can see the last four years, these are college credit courses in which you could earn college credit, AP and dual credit and what the enrollments have been. There was a, quite a big dip in the COVID year. That was seen throughout the state. A lot of that dealt with the, those kids that chose remote learning. They didn't necessarily have those opportunities for, for dual credit or as many AP classes. Back to about normal. And then last year, we, we really tried to identify a group of kids that hadn't accessed honors, AP, or dual credit yet. So we looked at every kid that had just, had gotten all As and Bs in high schools, in high school and hadn't taken any AP or honors classes since those are sort of the traditional measures of what, of the kids that, that take those classes. Not, not the only measure, but it, it was the one that we could use and that's sort of why we're here with EOS here. So if you want to go to the next slide, this is that, that group of kids that we identified, had individual conversations with and how they did first semester this year in those, those AP or honors or dual credit classes. As you can see, about 59% of them got As and Bs in the first semester, 84% ABC. So they, they did pretty well. And, and these are kids that hadn't signed up for those classes. This was after registration. We, we met with the counselors, counselors pulled them in, had individual conversations and talked them into trying at least one. Another thing we did was we, we piloted College Algebra Trig, which is, which is also pre-calc for, that's traditionally a class that seniors would take. They would take Math 1, 2, 3, and then they could take College Algebra Trig or AP Calculus or, or one of those other classes. By taking College Algebra Trig as a junior instead of Math 3, it, those students would, will all take AP Calc AB next year. So it gives those students an opportunity to take an AP class that they, maybe they didn't think they were ready for to begin with. So this shows the grades of those. The juniors have done better than the seniors that would have typically taken that class this year in a statistically significant way, sorry. So, so that's something that, and we're, we're actually, AP has an AP pre-calculus class that is, doesn't exist yet. It'll exist next year. So that's what College Algebra Trig will be next year. It'll be in another AP class, so a credit-bearing class.
Those were seniors in the same group, they were different seniors.
Yeah, so there's both the seniors that would normally take College Algebra Trig, so they had taken Math 1, 2, 3, and they wanted to continue with a math class and maybe they weren't ready, didn't feel like they were ready for one of those AP math classes. So they took College Algebra Trig. And then the group of juniors that we piloted with to try to get them so that they could take an AP class as theirs, for their senior year. And those juniors have, have done pretty well and most will continue on into one of those AP math classes. So as I said, if you want to go to the next one earlier, that we use GPA because that's the measure we had, that's what we could look at. EOS and Tracy will talk more about this, it has worked with schools around the country and they found that the biggest things that predict success in those advanced AP classes, dual credit classes, honors classes are the students' motivation and their interest in the subject. And we don't really have a way to measure that currently. So that was, that's sort of the impetus behind this possible partnership. And, and Tracy will talk a little bit more about how that goes, but part of it is all the students are surveyed, teachers are surveyed to try to identify kids that they think are ready, should take these classes. And then each, you can go ahead to the next one too. What, what will end up happening is each of our students will get an insight card on. So you can see there's a lot of information on here.
Can I interrupt? We did put an exam, the sample insight card should be in each of your packets. So if you want to take it out and look closer at it, sometimes not as easy to see on the screen.
Right. You, you can see on, on the right, there's the GPA, you know, just looking at the GPA, it wouldn't jump out that the student would be an AP student. But, I mean, you see those three apples there, that would be that at least three, that would be three different staff members have identified this student as someone that they think might have the, sort of the personal characteristics that, that could be successful in an AP class. In the upper left, you would see some of those mindsets that would come from that survey, that he has a growth mindset, he's gritty, he has academic strategy. So maybe his GPA doesn't look great, but that he knows how to struggle through and, and get through those, those difficulties in a class to, to be successful in there. So a, as you're looking at this, is there anything that jumps out? Anything you guys like about these insight cards?
How do you get grit?
How do you get grit? Well, so that would be, Tracy, do you want to answer that?
So in our survey, which is scientifically based, we've actually partnered with the gurus of these particular mindsets. So with grit, it's Angela Duckworth. So we've drawn our survey questions from her work with growth mindset, Carol Dweck, and so on. So we're not asking in the survey, hey, student, do you have grit? We're asking questions that are.
Yes.
Right, exactly. So we're asking questions that are like a factor analysis that would indicate that yes, the student does have this particular attribute or mindset.
Can I get an example?
Uh, so.
Wow.
Um, an example. When I'm faced with a problem that I don't know the answer, my tendency is to, you know, and they give you a series of questions. And then the way that they would answer that question in conjunction with the other six factors.
I see.
And then they would say if they answer four of the six, then yes, they are, have that particular mindset.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That's a great question, by the way, and bless you.
Thank you. And you see the student patterns at the bottom, it sounds like that are collection piece for.
You get to know.
Yes, you get to know the student a little bit.
Yeah, and, and we would get these for all students too. It wouldn't just be for the students that are identified as this kid maybe is an AP potential type.
I see that. I like the part when asked whether the barriers, you know, because my first brush was Lockport. And it wasn't Lockport, but anyway, it was a feeder, one of seven feeder schools. When the day I bought my daughter to enroll, I was, because she came from a different school, I was sitting in the lounge. And some of the teachers that came over with them, you know, they were saying, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't, you know, recommending students for this, you know, whatever. So I think this is a true factor, you know? Because a lot of times, kids don't, you know, try things because they don't have somebody encouraging them, you know, or telling them, you could do it.
We also think that that's important. You can see on the card up there, you can see that they have like, who are the trusted adults, right? Because we want to tap those students on the shoulder by somebody that they trust. And you can see who is a study skill support the student goes to so we can support the student through their journey. So there's a lot of data on this card for students that we haven't been able to gather in the past.
Can we also probably include a Myers-Briggs personality test? I feel like that would also, or is that something that's copyrighted, but somehow?
That's not something that we include with ours. We don't have permission to use that, but.
I guess, I guess it was copyrighted. I just had to ask because I think that's also like personality type.
And, and one of the things, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I think that's important here is, you know, having worked with Tracy and worked with EOS, the driver here behind this is something that over time, teachers have identified the most important factor is motivation, hard work. You know, teachers who teach advanced placement dual credit, international backglow, recognize that that's a core strength, more than anything else, is, is desire, drive, grit, interest. So the EOS survey really gets, gets to that. So I'm sorry if I stole your, your thunder, but I just think that note that it, it's taken from teacher perceptions of working with students, of what does it take as a student to be successful in these kind of rigorous classes.
So how you going to get around the barriers?
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Conrad.
And if you need me to advance your slides, please let me know.
Yeah, sure. So I just want to point out, Ms. Johnson, that you bring up a really good point. The two biggest barriers in every single district we've worked with, which are now hundreds and hundreds over the, across the United States, adult encouragement and welcoming barrier. So students hear about these courses. The school counselors have done their due diligence. They've gone to every single English class, English teachers, you can, you know, vouch for this. And they've talked about the different classes that you have available across your curriculum. The difference is, a lot of students, number one, don't even know they're allowed to take those classes. They don't know what they're about. They don't know they're allowed to take them. And so when the school counselors are talking about it, they don't say, they're talking to me. So really, this is drilling down to student-level information so we don't miss those students. And so I'm going to give you a, a little bit of background about me. I'm a former high school principal. My superintendent, no offense, Dr. McBride, had gone to an MSAN conference, Minority Student Achievement Network. He came back on fire about this EOS. I was a principal and I was like, mm, you know, thank you, Dr. Belcher, but we're doing all of these things. You folks are doing an amazing job. You saw the numbers up there. And I was like, we really don't probably even need this EOS. And he said, let me reiterate that we're going to do this. And then it wasn't until we actually surveyed the students and drilled down to the student level that I realized and saw how many students were flying under the radar, how many students we were missing. And this is Equal Opportunity Schools' mission, is that we are going to get every single student, the students that have the most barriers are going to be your students of color, your students from low-income families who maybe whose parents didn't go to a university or any post-secondary. And we're going to identify them, make sure that we know what they want to do, Mr. Navarro, I think you mentioned that, and make sure they're on track to do that and even test it out before they go to school for four years to become a teacher and realize it's really not all that much fun, for example. So anyway, we are really there to identify what they need to take and identify the upper level classes, which include dual enrollment, dual credit, CTE, whatever it is that they're going to pursue to make sure they access at least one of those classes, to make sure they're prepared for the rigor that is going to await them after high school.
Yeah, I was talking to Dr. McBride about the bottom third, which is, covers more than, you know, minority students, whatever. Those are the kids I think have the most potential. And I always say they probably just need a kick in the butt, you know?
Well, sometimes yes. And sometimes we're putting them into classes that, okay, you're a sophomore, you're a junior, we're going to put you in this AP World History class. And maybe I don't like World History. So what if I put you in an AP Music Theory class because you love music? So it's really getting down to, again, the student level of what interests them. So I ask you to think about, yes, sir?
Yeah, that reminds me. I used to have a lot of friends who were in AP class. A lot of them would always complain, it's like, why is this AP class recommended? Why do I have to take this? And a lot of them don't realize that there are alternatives. Cause I remember one of my friends had to take like a European history class. And he was like, yeah, I don't actually care about Europe. And it's like, it was just what was recommended to them.
Right.
So it does make sense that.
So I concur with your friend, by the way. But anyway, so think about the students in your district that are furthest from access, who may be sitting in the, in the, in the seats in your school that don't even know about. Who may be sitting in the, in the, in the seats in your school that don't even know about this. Why does it matter? Next slide, please. Okay? We just talked about all the great work that is being done here and, and the effort that's being put forth. And yet we see these juniors and seniors who are in one AP IB class. And you see the students who are still furthest from access, right? So what we're proposing is that we're going to work with you to identify these specific students, the 27 students. If we wanted 35% across all demographics, the 27 students from the high-income black African-American group that we need to do purposeful outreach to, to close the opportunity gap. And so on across the board, uh, for all of the students who are furthest from access. 30 students to get 35% of your low-income white students. We're going to give you a list that is far exceeds those numbers to make sure that each student has a conversation. Why does it matter? Okay? Because we know that graduation from a four-year college is really disparate depending on your, um, your race. And we might think, well, wait a minute, what about two years, you know, degrees? They're even lower, actually. And, next slide. We also know that students from low-income families are four times less likely to graduate in four years from a university. And again, even lower for some of the two-year programs. So this is why we want to make sure, next slide, please? We want to make sure that every single student has an opportunity to access this rigor. Um, this is a college board slide, um, I admit that, but it's a really good one. Because it talks about if you just take one class, you don't even have to get a passing score, three, four, or five. Just access to the rigor increases your chances tremendously of graduating from college in four years. It doubles your chances if you get a one on the AP exam, okay? Triples your chances if you get a two, which is where usually most first-time takers land.
And there's, you know, maybe just a simple logic to point out. All five of the students that you saw present here tonight, all of them have taken advanced placement, dual credit, or a good mix of both.
We honored someone about them today, didn't we?
Well, that was Illinois State Scholars.
Yeah.
But we in the fall did AP Scholars, but think of it this way.
Oh, yeah.
Next year, they'll have five classes that are AP classes. They'll be college-level classes. So there's a simple calculus that if you're going someplace after high school, what, and, and in this particular area, that would be technical school apprenticeship, because these are very sophisticated places. To JJC, to a four-year college, all of those require the ability to handle rigor. So you should get a taste of it now. Sorry to interrupt.
So does this include dual credit also?
Yeah, so we actually look at those insight cards where they say what their career interest is and make sure that they're in the correct pathway to get there, right, whether it's CTE. Um, and even if you don't have a highly-developed CTE program, um, if you stop and think about the problem-solving ability that AP class presents. Um, anyone ever tried to read a technical manual? Okay, it's a really high lexical reading level that is required. So, you know, even if it don't have the very particular pathway, having, making sure they have accessed these advanced classes is going to help them in whatever pathway they pursue. So, these are some of the things that you're going to find out. I've talked about all of these. Um, something that people don't really realize, improve, improved test scores. The more students you have taking rigorous classes, the better ACT scores are going to be, the better the SATs and your state-level testing. Um, that's something that maybe some folks don't think about. Um, transformation of adult mindset, um, Ms. Johnson, I think you alluded to it. This idea of what an AP or advanced-level student looks like typically. Um, is someone with a really high GPA and someone with a good test scores. Uh, Darian, who you saw there, who had three teacher recommendations and a really average GPA, was an outstanding candidate. So we're not saying every single solitary student needs to be in an AP class. What we are saying is there are a bunch of students walk in your hallways that have these average GPAs that need to be tapped on the shoulder, as you mentioned, Dr. Christopher, about, look, you need to take at least one of these before you get there and you have five. All right, here's your person that is your accountability partner, all right? This is where I think we really differ. Someone mentioned that it's like getting a gym membership, right? Especially after your New Year's, New Year's resolution, you get a gym membership, you're going to go, you're going to go, and then things come up, right? If you have to meet a trainer there every time, you're more likely to go. This is basically your trainer. This is the person that is going to be assigned to your particular school district, your high school, and they're going to come in. And they're going to meet with the teams and they're going to actually say, are you doing this, are you doing this? Here's your list, what's the plan? They're going to keep you basically accountable, because things can come up in the high school, as you know, and this sort of gets pushed to the back. If this is what you're dedicated to, we're here to make sure that you follow through with everything. Okay, really quickly, these next couple of slides. Next year, it's all about surveying, data, using the data to build your goals, meeting with the teams, meeting with the students, and enrolling for the following year, okay? And real briefly, I'll just, again, the next slide will show you just exactly what happens. So we meet with your team and we set your goal, okay? If it's 50%, we're going to make it 50%. We're going to meet with this, with the teachers and explain what's going on. We may meet with some of the, uh, you know, families in the, in the, in the school for parent night, something like that. Uh, we're going to survey both teachers and students. We're going to give you the results of your survey and we're going to come in and pour through them and we're going to make goals. Then we're going to do outreach, then we're going to go do more outreach, okay? And then at the end, we're going to enroll for the following year. Outreach to those students that are on that list that are furthest from access. And that they should be in those classes, in our opinion, based on our parameters, that go well beyond those GPA and test scores and do outreach to those students in particular.
Don't take this the wrong way, but are you doing any kind of change management or outreach to the teachers?
I, I won't take it the wrong way, because that's probably one of the biggest barriers. And teachers are out there working hard. They don't come to the table with, you know, sort of malicious intent. We have done things in high schools a certain way for a really long time.
Yeah.
And so we're here to disrupt it, okay? And say that there's a different way to look at students that go beyond GPA and test score. And the students go in and prove us right every single time. So in an indirect way, yes.
And, and if I just put a, that, oftentimes, Ms. Johnson, that, that's really the role of the administration. And at one point, you and I were in a conversation, you said, you keep talking about this, equal opportunity schools, you've been talking about this for two years. And part of that, I think, you know, is the change management, where some of the things that we put in place to prepare a mindset. Science plus math plus. Learners who would be in one science level going straight into chemistry. Taking 55 students who all had As and Bs, never were invited into honors or AP, working with our school counselors who did a great job, or teachers who did a great job this year, bringing them into that space, seeing their success. I think sometimes the best change management is starting to do the work, seeing the results and saying, gosh, this shows a lot of promise. We're ready maybe to take it to a, a higher level. So thus the, the two years of change management prep.
So you start with what grade, does that fit, takes, you say it takes two years?
So we actually survey all students. So you can, you can go nine through 12 if you'd like and, and do outreach to all those students. We focus on the students who are getting ready to graduate, okay? So there are ninth, or, excuse me, there are 11th, uh, 10th and 11th graders that will talk to you next year. There will be 11th and 12th graders the next year. And we want to focus on them because they're getting ready to graduate. Um, but there's no limit as to what, if you say, we want to do all nine through 12, we'll do all nine through 12. It's really, really, it, it takes a lot of commitment to make sure you're getting the 11th and 12th graders. Um, and so we sort of start with that and then say, if you get those first, then we'll focus on ninth and 10th. But if you want to focus on ninth and 10th, we can do that too.
The reason why I ask this, because you said it's, uh, looks like it takes two years. So the first year is the survey and, uh, developing the card. Then the next year, you put the plan in place. So if you start with a 12th grader, he's gone.
Right, but we're going to focus on 10th and 11th graders because they'll be 11th and 12th graders the next year.
Okay.
Okay, to get that one under their belt. And I think it's really important, and I didn't emphasize it enough, but see that support plan? Because we need to put supports in place and we take the expertise of your teachers and your team and say, what supports do you have in place? What supports do you have in place for your advanced-level classes? Because not all the time are they the same for your on-level classes. Your support plan in response to, uh, to intervention really should be systemic, nine through 12. And so we really start looking at some of the gaps in the policies and whatnot, your drop policy, for example. So we collectively work with the teams to come up with a plan to make sure that they don't get out the first time it gets hard, because that's their initial response, like, ooh, this is not for me, okay? And they go running down to school counselor and the school counselor takes them out and puts them in something else. No, i- in college, they would call you a dropout, okay? So we need you to be, get through it here where you have people to support you. So when you get to the next level, you have the skills to advocate for yourself, get through the hard part, figure out the workaround.
To be hon, in, in college, you have the ability to take a class for like two weeks. And then you can drop out without any penalty, so long as you don't drop below a specific like grade or credit thing, you're still fine.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's also just a matter of probably even having the opportunities, because like, one of the things I remember that a lot of them said is like, oh, these AP classes are faster.
Mm-hmm.
So, a lot of kids don't know what it means to be faster, to have a faster course. So, like, when I, I remember I took, um, my AP economics, actually with Mr. Lesser back when in high school, back when he was teaching. So it's really funny to see him as a dean now and be like, oh, yeah, and he was a great teacher. When, when they said like, oh, it's going to be fast, it's going to be, you know, a lot more than you're used to, in some instances, yes, but also in some instances, no, did it come up to my expectation. Because honestly, I thought like the teacher would just have like more to cover. But really, a lot of it is just more of like reading and a lot of the concepts are more like, instead of him, like, he still stopped to give examples of like economics, just like from other things. So a lot of people think like, oh, does that mean we're not going to have that many more, as many examples? Does that mean that you're going to force us to do more work? It's like, yes and no, but not really. Like, we're not going to be forcing you to walk home with like a hundred pages, like a hundred problems. It's about the same amount of work, it's just that the expectations are different and you can't really compare it, if it makes sense.
Right, and, and that's what we want them to work through, right? Is that like, ooh, this doesn't feel that great. I can tell you that for 5% of the students that we recommend, it may not be a good time yet. But I can also tell you that 85% of the students or 80% of the students do really, really well with just tier-one intervention, right? So part of this is, and some are going to need some tier-two intervention, right? Um, but part of this is really dispelling the myths and the war stories around these advanced-level courses. Because these students can do it and they go in and they do it all the time.
And when, um, Dr. Conrad talks about tier-one intervention, remember, that's a support that would happen at the classroom level and tier-one and tier-two compass overlaps that. So we've already got some built-in supports ready to go.
That in place.
Yeah.
They just need to take advantage of it.
And we don't, we need to make sure we don't put, I'm part of your staff now, I'm saying we, I'm sorry.
You're part of us.
Um, but part of this is too, is looking at a drop policy. Like, we were in a university town as well and we said, you only had 10 days. Well, that's not even enough to figure out, like, get your bearings. And so we really had to look at some of our policies and like, that's a really stupid idea. Let's look at what we need to do to support them to stick it out at least until semester. That really gives them an opportunity. And by that time, they're like, okay, I've got it.
And I think the key, like, why this goes along with our board goal one and the work we've done with pathways is really ensuring that students have an experience, their junior or senior year, that's really going to help them figure out like, yes, this is what I want to do. So it's about putting them in the right AP, the right dual-credit course, um, to set them up for success.
This is a thing for my, to my board. We do have the capability, I think like, a lot of people are also just scared about like, oh, what is the first class going to be? Because I think if we had the ability to even just record like an example lecture, just something, to be able to say like, listen, we're not going to throw like eight concepts at you at one class. We're just going to start it, like, we're going to start it slow. These concepts are a little bit hard, like calculus is harder to grasp than algebra. But technically, it's the same amount of work. It's just the expect, again, the expectations are different depending on what you're taking.
We would add that to the list of recommendations for supports, right? So, okay, let's have a bridge program and have them observe the class before they take it.
Yeah, that would, I, I, I could like, that would be nice.
I think what you want to do is to- Jump in, so that sink or swim and then if they think they're sinking, right, right, if they think they're sinking, someone come to them and say, okay, why do you think you're sinking? You know, what do you need? It's all about this, but what do you need to complete this? You know, you don't want to, like, when my son played, uh, baseball, he would get on the team and if the coach had him on the bench, he'd go, I want to quit. I'm like, no, you want to play baseball, if you have to sit on the bench all the rest of the season, you're going to sit on that bench. But you signed up for it, you're not going to quit. So it's just a matter of teaching them not to quit.
And that, Ms. Johnson, you, what I've found in doing work with equal opportunity schools, teachers come along, they want to know how to do it, they, they do want, you know, what supports will be available to me. Um, boards come along, put the, anybody in here, and no offense to any teenagers in here, but the mission of convincing someone, let's do harder work. Um, that is, that is, that is difficult to, and what I've found is the belief system with students, the belief system with themselves to embrace that and that idea that you just talked about, that on the first, struggle is not failure. These are not, not the same, same thing. Mrs. Kishline could tell you many of her teachers who have students who are struggling in their class. And maybe for a long time, our mythology was, no student should struggle in an advanced placement class. Well, all students, all of us, even at our great expertise levels, have struggled with, within that. And normalizing, struggle is different than failure. And that's really where there's growth.
Can we put that on a wall somewhere in our school?
Sure.
Get the T-shirt.
No, we need that in a wall to surmise people that, yes, just because you're struggling does not mean you're failing.
Right, it's not, not the same thing. And I, I know you have an ample agenda, I just want to make sure that these three, these are three key individuals. If you approve this, um, relationship, but I hope you feel we've done the pre-work over two years to really set the change context. Um, we're trying to align it to your goal and that you feel like this is a quality proposition. In terms of having analytics and insights into our students, that we do not have those type of analytics, those type of insights. And that could launch us into really thinking about how can we reach that student who, who, who isn't quite being reached yet? Thanks so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nicely done, yeah.
Thank you so much for your time and thank you for sharing that. Take a nap, please.
Uh, finally, just before I end my, uh, um, presentation, just want to, uh, congratulations, if I didn't do it before, to Mr. Marty Borsma, who's, sorry, I'm pointing, that's rude. Um, and, uh, Dr. Sandra, uh, Simone Rogers, and to Dr. Veronica Shaw, who were all elected as school board members. Um, so looking forward to kind of that, that process as well, talking Mr. Doctor Osbald, excuse me. You know, new roles, new assignments, um, so just want to acknowledge that and, um, you know, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Well, it's me, Ed.
Yes.
I feel like I'm, it's going to be the Laura Show here for a little bit. Um, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We had the inaugural event on Thursday of the HLM showcase. So HLM stands for Helping Everyone Learn More. And this board has been incredibly supportive of teachers engaging in professional development this year and over the past couple of years. So we really started thinking, how can we showcase what they've learned and let them have a space to share with one another? Uh, so on Thursday, after testing, we went over to Papa Joe's and we had a little luncheon where we had time to chat with one another. But then the main showcase were- But then the main showcase were roundtable discussions where teachers in a framework shared. Here's where, where I went, here is what I learned, here's how I implemented in the classroom, and here's what students were able to do. So we had everything from um, learning about how do we use learning targets in the classroom. To the benefits of instructional coaching, which uh, members on our curriculum committee have heard from our instructional coaches. Um, our, some members of our math department are doing reading about space and how to further engage students in mathematical classrooms. They shared that, um, uh, we had a science presentation about um, carrying the error forward. Sometimes a student makes an error in their work, but when you carry it forward, it's, it's not a zero for lack of it. Like, there's doesn't demonstrate zero understanding, we have to look at the error, error in that. Um, we had a presentation uh, by a school, two school counselors. Talking about the work they've been doing around multi-tiered system of supports with our solution tree con- consultant. Uh, second language acquisition and um, it was really a wonderful afternoon of just sharing. Um, Dr. McBride did a great job of a kickoff, um, giving a little keynote where he talked about his dissertation. But really talked about, how do we work to make sure that we are getting results? And that we're truly collaborating to support students. So um, I don't know if you have any questions, but.
Yeah, my, my reaction, one, Dr. Christopher Ferro and team did an excellent job. And two, I think next year, you know, we just had little old Papa Joe's and, and I think next year, we're just gonna need a much bigger venue. That's what everybody exiting said, you're gonna need a much bigger venue. And also, any event that I go to, that I think, gosh, I wanna resign my job and go back into the classroom. That's a really good event, when you're envious um, of people who are talking about their teaching. And I, I just got so excited as a teacher, it was amazing.
Thank you.
Here's report number three.
Hi, Dr. Christopher Ferro, you're on tonight.
I'm not getting up moving just yet. Uh, so Dr. McBride has been talking to the board for some time now about international travel. Uh, we know there were opportunities for students that were, you know, some of our teachers were taking some students on trips. But we really know that the work of international travel is a great opportunity for students. Um, it, it helps them with global competency, which would help them be more engaged citizens, prepare for jobs, um, think globally. And really, the trip we're excited to offer, one of the two trips we're excited to offer in the coming year is around community service. Which we know that this board is so passionate about. So um, as part of this work, um, four of us have kinda met in a subcommittee, Ms. Kroy, Mr. Kundari, Mr. Lesser and I. And we've been investigating other districts and other programs. And we feel really positive about what we're bringing forward with you this year. Um, Ms. Dreya Kintanar, who's an experienced traveler and has taken students on trips before. She's very, very excited to be hosting our first community service trip to Dominican Republic. Um, at her meeting to talk about this opportunity, uh, we were kinda overwhelmed. We had about a hundred students show up to that, so that was not something that we anticipated. Um, part of our plan with this international travel is some rotation. So, you know, we, we are tapping on sophomores and juniors to maybe go on this trip to the Dominican Republic in March of twenty-four. Um, and then freshmen and sophomore who did show interest would hopefully get to go on it, we, if we'd offered it in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. Uh, the cost of the trip you see here is thirty-six hundred dollars, students are required to buy insurance. The EF company does provide the district with additional insurance and this was something that we really investigated. Uh, there will be some fundraising done by Ms. Kintanar, but also EF does uh, fundraisers. I don't know if any of you have seen this from family members, where maybe a student is going on a school-sponsored trip. And they opt to ask people for, instead of birthday gifts, would you donate to my trip? So there are things like that that are going to be available for that trip. Um, and then the next trip, I'm actually gonna ask Dr. McBride to, to talk a little bit about it because I'm sure to slaughter Yamate.
Right, this is something else that we've been, we've been working on. Um, the Yamate Kakun uh, High School in Yokohama, which is just north of um, Tokyo. Also, incidentally, Yokohama hosts the largest um, ni- US naval base outside of the United States. Um, is home to the uh, US Pacific Fleet. Uh, they actually, as a school, students are required to participate in a two-week exchange. Two-week exchange to a country like the United States, Canada, uh, New Zealand, Australia. And then also to host students as well as part of their, their school's mission. They actually found us. Um, you might recall, we have a, a, a teacher here, a Japanese teacher through the J-LEAP program. The Japan Foundation pointed us out as an exemplary Japanese language program with Sensei Button. Um, and Emi Onada, Sensei Onada, um, both doing an, an amazing job. Came and actually visited us last year, returned again, and they're in the proposal stage. Um, there is uh, just a, some short slides from um, uh, Sensei Button. In your um, in, in your folder that she gave me, um, actually on Friday, a little too late to get into your agenda. But I think some information pieces, and what it basically involves is it involves. Um, students from Yamate would come here in April of twenty twenty-four for two weeks. They would be hosted in homes, there'd be four year Japanese students, we would need twenty homes. Over the two weeks that they're here, we would provide them programming, um, educational programming. Then in July of twenty twenty-four, our students would go, which is the beginning of the school year in Japan. To Yokohama and reciprocate that, that stay. Um, we don't have a price point for this trip quite yet because the primary price would be airfare. When you do a homestay, um, the, what, what's involved there is, is you save quite a bit. On um, hotels and things like that. Obviously, here and there, all parents would be vetted, um, so it's a safe situation. Um, so let me, let me pause on, on both those trips. One question for you that you might ask is, what's the difference between a district sponsorship? Comes under your, your bailiwick versus some of our world language teachers take students on tours? Couple differences. One, the difference between a, a tourist and cultural tour and an educational tour. An actual tour with educational aims and goals. In this particular case, one is to earn community service credit to fulfill your board um, graduation requirement. The other is an extension of our Japanese program. Um, also, it means that you're underwriting some costs that would come with that. In this recommendation, I would highly recommend an administrator must go. Uh, the reason for that, in my own experience, is um, things come up. That, that the teacher leading it is, is doing the educational component. But in my work, I've taken kids to hospitals, I've had kids misbehave and make poor choices. The administrator is dealing with that so the teacher can continue teaching. Um, allergies, you, you name it. Um, also, we would have a responsibility to make sure that students who might not be able to afford going on these trips. Back to our discussion about fees, how do we underwrite that and provide resources for that as well? Um, and then finally, in the Yamate exchange, we are taking on hosting those students. Field trips, educational trips, spending time here. And that would be reciprocated when our students would go there as well. Um, so there is some, some costs involved. So let's, let's pause there, see if there's any questions. Um, we think the high interest in both of these trips really indicates that there is interest in our community for global competency. And I, I, I just cannot stress, especially for Americans, um, experience in Asia, critical. Experience in the world, critical, um, to being a competent person.
I think, I like the idea of doing it, but you know, as I talked to you before, I have safety concerns. Especially going to Dominican Republic and that area, I don't know whereabouts in Dominican, but some areas are very, you know. You see Americans go down there on mission trips or whatever and they get kidnapped, you know. Or they, or there's some, you know, so, there's things that happen and we would be liable.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a good question. I would say on the island of Hispaniola, that has not happened in the Dominican Republic.
Okay.
Neighboring Haiti has had those problems.
Okay.
And in this particular case, you, one reason, you, you have very astute point, Mrs. Johnson. That's why a trip like, like the service trip would have to have a tour operator like EF. That has all sorts of security precautions built in, um, liability insurance to cover that liability. Um, and wherever we go, you know, um, we have certain things that are covered in insurance and decision-making that's not covered under insurance. Um, and then also, we would ask students to take out travel insurance. Uh, we would require that for both of these trips so that if, for example, issues in Haiti spill over in the Dominican Republic. The board feels three weeks before you have to take action, can't let this trip go, it's not safe. That travel insurance would cover that, that potential loss. We have students going to Yokohama, somehow there's trouble in the Pacific, you're uncomfortable, travel insurance would kick in. Um, so we would cover that both from our liability insurance, but also we would ask every participant to take out travel insurance.
Not the one going to Dominican Republic, how many kids we talking about?
Um, it's because of the, the bus, you only get twenty-eight spots, so we allowed twenty-four students.
Okay.
With four adults, um, many of these trips, Dr. McBride and I have talked about it. Uh, sometimes you're using different kinds of public transportation if you've ever taken kids downtown on the metro, right? Like, it's six to one feels okay, six to eight to one, um, especially when you're here and we know. We know the transportation routes, right? So, a little bit different, uh, for this first year, we thought proposing it to you, just using one bus, that was a, a good way to go.
I know you said two hundred people tried to sign up.
A hundred people came to that first meeting, so that was exciting.
So I just wanted to give a resource for Mrs. Johnson real quickly about. There is a, something on the internet called the travel risk map. And just looking at the most updated version of the Dominican Republic. The Dominican Republic is currently a medium risk at the same instance of Greenland, Mexico, Egypt, Morocco. Um, I, I don't know if anyone wanted to see it, but um, it is, it goes low, medium, variable risk, high, and then very high. So it's the second safest while there's still some risk associated.
And, and EF Tours would monitor, I believe that State Department, they would monitor. Because their, their staff are going into situations like that, you know, any kind of situation where there's an escalating risk.
Japan is green, Canada's green, Norway's.
And Luanne, I, I can tell you from a personal experience, I've traveled with EF Tours a number of times, um, just as a teacher taking students. And I can attest to their policies, their procedures and the safety of the students on those trips.
Yes, when I traveled to South Africa, we had that situation like you say with a bus, I was with a group. We had the bus and a, a guide that took care of security and all of that stuff, so I didn't know too many about the security. It just, you know, I still have my concerns.
And no, you should, that's what, why you're a board member. You should, you know, folks do have to worry over that, um, you know, in terms of international travel.
Somebody's child, you know.
Yeah, and putting all the precautions in place to make sure that, you know, that's safe, that's sensible, it's reasonable, it's appropriately chaperoned, right? It's the size of a trip is manageable. Both these trips going out would be about twenty-four to twenty-six individuals with about three to four adult chaperones.
Okay.
I, I would just add too, that we were, in our discussions with EF, we were really impressed with um, the examples they gave. When a security situation arose, how they were, you know, how it was handled, so um, that's why we're.
And one last point to that, um, both, the, the idea of having a partner is very important. So EF, long history of um, education first, safety, security. But also, um, right, Yamate School has almost a sixty-year history of doing um, uh, exchanges just like this. Uh, the closest partner to us that they have is Fort Wayne, Indiana. They wanted to get a Chicago area partners, they have a very long history. So that's important to us that we're, we have trusted partners that are, that are vetted, that have a lot of experience.
Any other questions?
Those are great questions.
So would they be allowed to go, I guess they wouldn't be allowed to cross into Haiti and not even.
No.
That's not part of this trip.
I, I don't know how loose the borders are between Haiti and the Dominican Republic.
Uh, LTHS International is not that loose. We would not be that loose, right? Um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're also dealing with high school students.
Well, no, but there's very little time for downtime. We're running from the time to wake up.
Okay.
Hello, everyone, good evening. Um, Jen and I wanted to start off by thanking everyone, our staff, our students, our families for being flexible last week. As you know, we did complete our mandatory state testing and that took place on Wednesday and Thursday. Wednesday, we normally start with a late start, um, but thank you to Jeanette Castillo helping us communicate with our parents. That we needed to start at seven forty-five. Um, and it was a huge success on Wednesday, our juniors took the SAT and our sophomores took the PSAT. And then on Thursday, our juniors took the Illinois um, Science Assessment and then our freshmen took the PSAT. Um, and happy to announce that on Wednesday, I think we only had um, twenty students absent. And then on Thursday, we had only thirty students absent. So when you think about um, our numbers, uh, that was a huge success. And as you see in the, the report, um, athletics is going great, hopefully the weather figures itself out here. Um, felt like summer this weekend and here we are back to uh, snow today. And then also, um, the student success we're having with our clubs and organizations as you honor tonight. So we look forward to continuing to bring all of the wonderful things um, that our kids are doing um, to you. Um, every board meeting and honoring those students because we, you know, as we wrapped up some other activities. You know, we will have plenty more presentations, you know, for you to, to honor, so we're looking forward to that.
I would like to highlight this month, um, some special events that we have coming up. As you all know, we have a very busy place here at LTHS. On top of our spring sports and other activities going on, we do have some special events, uh, some of which that I wanna highlight for seniors. But two big ones this week, um, on Wednesday evening, we have a guide to college and career planning here at East Campus, beginning at six thirty. Our LTHS Guidance Department has done a great job in organizing this event, very informative night, encourage you to come out. And also on Thursday night of this week, the World Language Honor Society induction ceremony is going to take place. But as you heard from some of our students earlier in the evening, we do have some big events, particularly for se- for the senior class. The class of twenty twenty-three upcoming next Wednesday is the Top Ten Percent Dinner. Um, as you heard, next Saturday is Prom Twenty Twenty-three at the Museum of Science and Industry. And also wanna thank Lori Maddox and Jacqueline Lacasio, two of our social workers, a part of our, part of the Student Assistance Program. Um, who are highlighting a Prom Twenty Twenty-three Make Choices You Can Be Proud Of campaign next week. Where there will be plenty of activities um, that are planned for those attending prom, all about making good choices. So we look forward to that. The following Saturday is Senior Dinner Dance. Uh, later on in May, on May seventeenth, we have our Senior Awards Night. So a lot of events upcoming for our senior class. A lot of information is on the Student Splash page on the LTHS website. We are definitely getting to that time of the year where on top of all the other things that we have going on, some of our special events for seniors. So we very much look forward to that. And lastly, Carrie and I would like to thank Mr. Michael Lewandowski uh, for your service and time and support. The LTHS Board of Education, for my time at LTHS was been twenty-one years, you've always been on the board. And I found out it was three, three additional years up to twenty-four years you served for us. Carrie and I wanna thank you for your dedication and support. And we very much look forward to working with the new board members and of course, all of our current board members as well. Thank you.
Michael, thank you for your service.
Something for you to, I don't know if it's a big problem, but one of the students. Uh, was talking about transportation downtown, I know that is an issue, I don't like to go down there, but anyway. Um, have we ever looked into maybe doing something for some students who may have an issue trying to get to? Cause all students should go to the prom, I think that's a great event, that everybody should certainly go, but, you know, maybe some kind of way to. I don't know how many students have that issue of getting to it.
There, there have been times over the years that I know there have been a few situations where we've worked with families on um, certain situations with transportation. But I do think that we're gonna look deeply um, into next year into providing some potential school transportation for students. So we will look at that closer.
We have had conversations about that just recently.
Cause that would actually have some of the safe, safe issue to people with them driving or whatever.
Absolutely.
Anyway, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Just say, great man, thank a lot.
Let me do that.
Sure.
Okay, two, uh, one, you know. Okay, two, uh, one, you know, overnight field trip, we always like to let you know when quarters are traveling. Uh, Vex Robotics, um, these students will be down in Dallas, Texas. We have a plan, uh, three of these students have to get from this competition, right when it finishes, to Springfield, Illinois for Skills USA. They're competing at the state level on that, too. Uh, so we have a plan to get them safely, um, to, to Springfield. But they'll be down in Dallas, Texas, um, later this week. I'll jump right to the maintenance report, I know, um, a number of things, we still have a policy piece, so why don't I do this? A very solid maintenance report again, um, from Mr. Thompson. If there's any questions that you have, um, one thing that, that you can see, chillers, maintenance, um, generators, repair to ejection pumps. But one really amazing, uh, thing that's going on, I've been running into in my late night haunts, I had a, uh, a, a coffee last week on Tuesday night in the evening, uh, great conversation, uh, but I noticed a number of our maintenance folks are changing all the lights here at East to LED lighting, more efficient, clearer, cleaner, um, light. Um, but it's just one of those small things that brightens our hallways, longer lasting, um, highly efficient in terms of energy. And it's, it's always those small things, I think, that, that makes an institution, um, you know, uh, efficient and effective and we- well-run. Anything that anyone has any questions about, um, you know, from, from fields we're working on to the, the large, you know, projects that maintenance is involved in right now? We just know we have some policy slides I have to show you and want, want to, want to conserve your time, great, thank you. Mr. Thompson, anything, Mr. Thompson, you need to highlight?
No, good to go.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, numbers two to number eleven?
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis, are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes. Moving on to our action considerations, do I have a motion to approve the Equal Opportunity Schools partnership?
I move.
Second.
Right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions? Right, then, hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes. And do I have a motion to approve the proposed student international travel?
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis, are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the miscellaneous hourly pay rates for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year?
So moved.
And I can second that. Are there any questions? All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Lopez Cuniva, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent compensation for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis, are there any questions to that? Right, hearing none, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the new four-year lease for two new twenty-twenty-three activity buses? The two-year lease renewal for, uh, two twenty-nineteen activity buses, and the trade-in of two twenty-sixteen activity buses.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions? None, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three summer curriculum budget? I can make that motion?
Second.
And it's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Cuniva and second by Mr. Travis, are there any questions to that? Hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
All right, policy, um, I want to, want to take a moment, there, there are, press one eleven, uh, do a first reading, and at the board's reorganization meeting, and I should announce, May tenth, seven PM, would be when this board would convene. Uh, there would be one piece of action right now that I would bring you, which would be approving, uh, these policies on a second reading. Uh, why sort of that one piece of old business? Uh, this current board, you've been in a process, really, uh, now almost for two years, of bringing all of your policies in compliance with two laws, Aaron's Law and Faith's Law. Aaron's Law is really a state law that protects, uh, grooming and sexual misconduct that occurred, could occur to school-aged children outside of the school, in the home, um, in another setting. Faith's Law is really designed as a protection to protect, uh, students inside the schoolhouse. And the responsibility that we have as a board, me as a superintendent, all of our leaders, us as professionals, to have appropriate boundaries, uh, with students. So the majority of these, um, policies are your final policies to bring into alignment with, uh, Faith's Law, which there will be one that I want to highlight because it will significantly change Mr. Kandari's, um, office in terms of background checks, and it actually addresses some things that you brought up as, as board members, um, in the past. There are also two other, uh, policy revisions that you've been a part of, updates to policies you approved merely a year ago. Um, so I will go ahead and, and just share, uh, these slides. As always, thank you to your, uh, board secretary, um, Kathy Maxwell, who does such a great job, uh, organizing this. And again, press is, is an arm of the Illinois Association of School Boards that translates legislative decisions into policies. So, policy two colon one zero, uh, one one zero, is, is in essence that you, as a board, agree that you will bring into, um, all of the requirements of Faith's Law regarding any kind of sexual misconduct, that we would look for an employee history, uh, review prior to hiring a person, that you, you agree. We already do that, we've never hired, you know, uh, employees that we don't do a ba- background check. There's a key phrase there, these are employees that are in direct contact with, with students. So for example, the state is wrestling right now, what do we do with officials? It's one little gray area that the, the state needs to clarify. Uh, these are hypertemporary employees, they are with students, but they might only be with students for two hours, and in some cases, we may, may never see that official ever again, right? Um, three colon forty, um, this policy update requires, first off, me to follow the reporting procedures and the abused and neglected, um, reporting policy. So, so I have to come in, in line, not only, and also, when I'm, when a superintendent's hired, you have to do a criminal background check, but I also have to observe, um, these provisos. There's also a piece, you're already in compliance with this, that, um, the superintendent is evaluated per state law. An annual evaluation that takes place by April first, where there's a comment on that superintendent's achievement or lack of achievement in terms of board goals. Uh, four colon sixty, this gets into Mrs. Kroy's area. Uh, this policy prohibits employees from having direct contact with children or students if the contractor has not performed a sexual misconduct-related employee history review. So these are even for contracted employees. Let's do, you know, if we hire in Quest, these are employees that day-to-day, they have interaction with our students, Quest is going to hire an employee, but if an employee history review has not taken place on that person, they, they cannot be hired. Uh, this, that does not apply, you know, and I just want to go back to the direct contact. Let's say that we have someone who comes in, is doing a massive plumbing job for Mr. Thompson, it's a one-time contract. They're coming in, they're an independent contractor, they're doing the work at night because it would interrupt water flow. They're never here when students are here, that's not the same as a Quest employee who's every day having interaction with students. Uh, this is the important one, and I might call on Mr. Kandari, oh yeah, sorry.
When we had, put that addition on the backend, uh, we were doing it when students were here, so did those employees have to be?
An employee history review?
Yeah.
They, they will have to, and I'll, I'll, uh, you will talk about this on Mr. Kandari. And are you, did you say, I might not have heard you, did you say new, uh, because I, I heard the word backend.
No, we, we added the, the, uh, addition.
Oh, when we had, sorry, yeah, that was the part I missed.
Because there were contractors here working.
Those type of workers who are here, day in, day out, yes, they would have to have an employee history review.
Okay.
And all of our contractors.
Right, they, they do.
We include that, the contracts.
Right. And, 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 and in many ways, we're already in, in compliance with this, because oftentimes we require this from vendors, right? But here's where there is, you know, five colon thirty is where you're starting to see a very big change from Mr. Kandari. This policy is updated, required districts to develop procedures to complete employee history review for any staff member, agent, or contractor that will have direct contact with students, this includes a superintendent hire. The, that phrase, employee history review, is significant. It's not just a previous call to the last employer. It requires, requires multiple call, calls to any, any, really any agency where that individual's had, um, held a position where they could have had direct contact. So typically, we've just called, you know, the previous school, gone to, or, uh, employee history review. We have to take a look at that person's employee history and go that far back. This will add significant time in HR because of the depth that we have to go. In essence, what the state is saying with Faith's Law is, we have to contact every agency that you've ever worked with to attempt to find out if you've had any kind of sexual misconduct. So, in the case of Bob McBride, you'd have to go to Newton North High School, Park River Forest High School, um, Glenbard East High School, um, Equal Valley High School, Northwestern Center for Talent Development, and North Central College. Just pause on, that's just one employee. They're all situations where I've had direct, probably not North Central, because those aren't minors, but.
Are those retroactive, this law?
Uh, it's not retroactive, but when you approve this, we'll be doing that moving forward. And this takes place July one. So it's a huge time, uh, and we'll, we'll see if it, if this regulation can survive, the time constraint. Um, five colon ninety, same, this is abused and neglected. We, I would assure you, we would always do this, but I do have to be honest with you, in my history as an administrator, um, regrettably, I've dealt with many situations of employee misconduct, both by male and female staff. Um, this policy was updated, required districts to develop procedures to notify the student and the parent or guardian of a student with whom a district employee, agent, or contractor is alleged to have engaged in sexual misconduct. So let me just back that up, this one, I think, is very important. Um, I have been in situations administratively where I've had administrators above me who did not want to inform a parent that we were investigating an allegation of sexual misconduct. Uh, that put me in a very difficult place as a, as a, as a administrator. Similarly, I have been in situations where students were involved in grooming, especially online, did not see themselves as victims of a sexual misconduct. We had to point out to this student, this, this, what this adult is doing is inappropriate. Student herself or himself did not realize it, um, that there was some victimization going on. This policy requires us both to inform the student and to inform that student's parent. I would say, we would do that as a district without a policy, but this is required by law and Faith's Law. So I just want to pause if there's any questions on that communication. But in my career, I've been directed by a superior not to inform a parent, which I would say is very bad practice indeed. Not in this district. All right, I want to be a hundred percent clear about that, in my experiences. Uh, five colon one twenty-five, this falls in Mr. Dusterhoff's area, this policy was updated, defined. What is electronic communication and social media and establish professional conduct ethics for the use of both? I just had a conversation with Mrs. Kishline about, we do this through annual trainings online. Uh, but we were just talking the other day about good reminders of when we're using electronic communication, social media, making sure we're all transparent, our communications are successful, they're professional, they're ethical. Uh, and maybe a good reminder for everybody, um, can help, um, so this kind of shores up that area. And then personnel records, very important, you've asked me as board members, this update requires a district to share information with a third party, that would be another school district, who's participating in this process regarding sexual misconduct, even if the incident is more than four years old. Previously, if it was more than four years old, districts did not have to comment on it. But many times, you've asked me, just supposing if you had someone, as we've done this work, who had a sexual misconduct, would we disclose that to a school doing an employee history review? We would now, that's a huge change in HR, um, huge change, um, but, but important. This is to ensure that a person who perhaps is engaged in sexual misconduct is not simply sliding on over to another school because, um, there wasn't an employee history review. Student teachers, they fall under all of this as well, in five colon two sixty, uh, so they have to have a similar background check. Let me just pause on the Faith's Law, and then I just have two more for you. It's heavy stuff. Okay, two that deal with two other laws, you've already, a year ago, you approved policy, but just two changes. Um, six colon one thirty-five relates to the Accelerated Placement Act, and I would say I work with Equal Opportunity Schools, which you just approved, which will help us with this new law greatly. But in the past year, um, ISBE has released a FAQ with some more specific guidelines, bringing our policy and our practice into alignment with that FAQ. We're really all, already there, because of the work that Dr. Christopher has done with our feeder districts and within our district itself. Library and media, this policy was, um, updated to identify parents, guardians, employees, and community members may file an objection to library and media resources. Um, this, this, this was a shift, um, really to respond to someone who's not really a member of the district community. We have someone who comes down from Mundelei and files a, a, a complaint about a curriculum here at LTHS, uh, a, a, a library book. Um, state law has changed in the past year that you, you have to, you have to be a parent, a guardian, employee, a community member, not someone from Indiana, for example, or I'm just picking that state arbitrarily. And also, we have to develop, um, a library and media resource objection form, and inform anyone using this form, ultimately, the district's decision, of course, we, we would do that.
So who would that form go to?
That form would go, you approved in the fall our library procedures, so that form goes to the universe, uh, universal grievance procedure, and that's under board policy as well, and we have two, um, complaint officers, Stephanie Kroy and Tony Kandari. Uh, Jen, that policy requires some interaction, um, before a complaint, you know, an effort for administrators and, 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 um, leaders to be responsive to a person's concern. And if the person says this isn't working out, they always have that right to file a uniform grievance. That's it.
Thank you.
Questions, thoughts, reactions, I'll bring those policies back on May tenth as a piece of old business.
Thank you.
Want me to jump right into announcements? Because we've got a big moment coming up with adjournment. So, uh, May one, statement of economic interests are due to Will County Clerk. Uh, May tenth, we've set a special board reorganization meeting. Spring musical, please let us know if you're interested, we'll, we'll get you connected, um, dot spell. Uh, May fourteenth, that just, you know, sharing, it's the last day to see the new board member. May fifteenth, regular board meeting, June third is graduation, and just that reminder, June twenty-sixth, um, is our June board meeting, it's a little bit different, uh, because of the June nineteenth holiday. I'm, I'm gonna stand back for, uh, Mr. Lewandowski, you go back.
All right, do I have a motion? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski, and I believe second, was it, was it?
I'll do it second for you.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone.
All in favor to adjourn?
All in favor?